City Commission meeting for December 6th will come to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Gault?
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kahler?
Present. Tonight Commissioner Abraham will do our invocation and our Pledge of Allegiance tonight after the invocation will be led by Daniel Willett. And Daniel is a Saint Mary's Middle School student in the sixth grade. Everyone stand.
Father, we thank you so much at this time of year for family and friends getting together. I pray that those that are traveling to get to us will have safe passage. Father, we also lift up those who, that this holiday season is the first without their loved ones. We pray that the Holy Spirit will comfort them. These things we ask in ye Shew's name. Amen.
Amen. Daniel?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Daniel. City Manager, are there any additions or deletions?
There are none.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go on with our presentation tonight. Our Student Christmas Ornament Contest winners tonight. So I have certificates for each of the students that made an ornament for our Christmas tree. And in our, I'll go on up to the podium. In our K through three category is Aiden Chino. Aiden, if you want to come on up. Thank you so much. Your ornament is beautiful and it hangs on our tree downstairs. And Aiden is a student at Saint Mary's Elementary. So the fourth through eighth category, second place is Ella Kreider. And she did a quilt ornament. Is Ella here tonight? Yes. She did a quilt ornament using fabric scraps to represent the National Quilt Museum. She also goes to Saint Mary's.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. You want to be in photo?
And first place is Emmy Seaton. And she did a reindeer ornament and she goes to Clark School. And she chose Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer to remind us to be true to ourselves, to be kind, and to accept others, and celebrate our differences. And Emmy also designed the Mayor's Anti-Bullying Christmas Card for Noble Park. And she chose the Grinch because he was bullied and his heart hardened, but then it became bigger and bigger as he was treated kindly. So, thank you so much, Emmy. And I'm so glad I got to meet you. You're such a wonderful young lady. And in the ninth through 12th category, first place is Erin Kirke.
Girke.
Girke. Hi, Erin. She's a Yasser Arts Center Watercolor Ornament and she's from the Open Door Academy Home School. Thank you so much. So once again, I want to thank all of our young people for participating in different events and contests and essays and all the things that we do here at the City of Paducah. We appreciate it and you are the future. So we'll go on with Commissioner Abraham with our minutes. I'm sorry?
We're gonna do the Employee Service Awards?
Oh, yes. Thank you. City Manager, the Employee Service Awards?
Mayor?
Mayor Kahler, please join me at the podium if you would?
Sure.
I don't drop all this in the way.
It's my pleasure tonight to recognize several of our employees for their long-term service and commitment to the City of Paducah. As I often say when I do this, for people that have been with the organization 20 years and plus, I'd have to put together four or five of my gigs to add up to one of your. So I really admire you for your dedication and in some ways I envy you for your ability to remain with one organization for as long as you have. Certainly the organization benefits from that as much or more than you do. So, first off, I'd like to recognize 20 years of service, starting with our own Director of Engineer and Public Works, Rick Murphy. I'll be giving Rick a service pin for 20 years and Mayor Kahler will give him a nice certificate suitable for praying. Here you go, Rick. I pin you, but I'm sure I'd poke you if I tried. We also recognizing Calvin Meadows tonight for 20 years. I'm not, Calvin's not here, I don't believe. William Shelby for 20 years of service to the Solid Waste Department as well. Congratulations. We also are honored and pleased to have some 25-year service awardees here tonight, starting with Jeff Montgomery, the Fire Department. Barry Carter, also the Fire Department. Our own Jonathan Perkins, Director of Finance, 25 years. Out of Missouri, I might add. Tamara Samerson, Sam, excuse me, Sanderson, 25 years. You can still make the walk up here. We also have a 30-year service award to give. And I'm not sure that we have a 30 pin, so we'll give a 25 and a 5. I'm not sure how we do that. Donna Swift is our 30-year service award honoree. Thank you very much. That, by the way, was accepted on behalf of Donna.
Okay, I have a proclamation tonight and Busy Banks was supposed to be here tonight, but he couldn't be, so I will go ahead and read it anyway. From the Office of the Mayor, whereas Pallister Killian Syndrome, our PKS, is a chromosome abnormality with a tetrasomy of the short arm of the chromosome 12 occurs for no known reason. And whereas characteristics of PKS include low muscle tone, sparse scalp hair at birth, high arched palate, hyperpigmentation, and cognitive and developmental delays. And whereas it is thought that there are under 200 diagnosed cases of PKS in the world. However, doctors at Children's Hospital in Philadelphia believe that the incidence of PKS is much higher, with as many as 2,000 cases in the United States alone. And whereas it is important to promote research, provide education, and raise awareness within the medical community in order to ensure early diagnosis of children with Pallister Killian Syndrome. And whereas because Pallister Killian Syndrome has no known cure, the organization of PKS kids focus on helping children and young adults to achieve their highest potential. And whereas the City of Paducah commands PKS kids for their mission to ensure early diagnosis of all children born with Pallister Killian Syndrome and provide resources and support to families, therapists, and caregivers of children with PKS. Now therefore, I, Gail Kahler, Mayor of the City of Paducah, do hereby proclaim December the 4th, 2016, as Pallister Killian Syndrome Awareness Day. So I'll make sure that Busy and his family get this. They did have an event Sunday at Starfish Ministry. And they want to raise more awareness nationally of this extremely rare genetic disease. So if you'll keep them in your prayers, they have a big burden on them. Okay, Commissioner Abraham with the minutes.
I move that the reading of the minutes for November 29th, 2016, City Commission reading be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second. Does everyone had time to look at those?
No.
Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Under motions, Commissioner Gault?
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Documents, notice of cancellation for the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky for Tuesday, November 22nd, 2016. Certificates of liability insurance, Moser Construction LLC, Burnett Custom Homes, Wilkins Construction Company, Inc., right-of-way bond for Burnett Custom Homes, Inc., quitclaim deed for Roger Kendall for 1418 Walter Jatton Boulevard. Contracts and agreements, agreement notice to proceed labor and material payment bond, contractor notice and nondiscrimination in employment with Wilkins Construction Company, Inc. For Paducah Health Park Project Phase One, short form agreement with HDR Engineering for Greenway Trail Phase Four Project, agreement with HDR Engineering for Professional Engineering Services for Flood Pump Stations Number Two and Number Nine. City of Paducah Financial Report for a period ending September 30th, 2016. Paducah Transit Authority Financial Statements with Independent Auditors Report for a year ended June 30th, 2016. Electric Plant Board of City of Paducah Doing Business as Paducah Power System Financial Statements for Years ended June 30th, 2016 and 2015. Bids for Police Department, Police Department Uniforms, Galls LLC.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, you have the municipal order?
Yes, ma'am. Upon recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order the personal changes on the attached list be approved.
Second. I'm Arden.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. Any questions on the personal actions?
Pretty clear cut, I think. Thank you.
You're welcome.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, you have the first ordinance for adoption.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Finance Director to make payment to I-5 Design Group, Inc., for architectural and design services for the Police Department Annex. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby authorizes and directs the Finance Director to make payment in the amount of $22,634.35 to I-5 Design Group, Inc., for architectural and design services for the Paducah Police Department Annex.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, you have the next one?
I do. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Finance Director to make payment to Morse Fencing for Fencing for the Police Department Annex. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby authorizes and directs the Finance Director to make payment in the amount of $24,390 to Morse Fencing for Fencing for the Paducah Police Department Annex.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky granting Comcast Cable Heartland Region formerly known as Comcast of the South LP, a franchise extension through April 11th, 2017. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the franchise agreement between the City of Paducah and Comcast Cable, Heartland Region formerly known as Comcast of the South LP, is hereby amended by extending the term of the franchise from November 2nd, 2016 through and including April 11th, 2017.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Okay, we have several for introduction tonight. Commissioner Rhodes, you have the first one?
Yes, ma'am. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the final report of Paducah Planning Commission on proposed final subdivision for Greenway Village Subdivision Phase Two, accepting all public improvements, easements, and right-of-way, and authorizing the mayor to subscribe a certificate of approval on the plat. This ordinance is summarized as follows, an ordinance approving the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed final subdivision for property known as Greenway Village Subdivision Phase Two, accepting all public improvements, dedication to right-of-way, and public utility easements. In addition, the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to subscribe a certificate of approval on the plat.
Second. Cheryl?
Hello, how's everyone?
Good.
Just an additional note to what Commissioner Rhodes said, the Engineering Department has received and approved a letter of credit from Paducah Bank in the amount of $38,000 for the road construction surety as well. Be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Sound good.
All right.
Commissioner Wilson, you have the next one?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Galls LLC for the purchase of uniforms for Police Department employees, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the City of Paducah accepts the bid of Galls LLC for uniforms for employees in the Police Department at the uniform unit prices contained in the bid dated November 12th, 2016, for a period of two years, beginning upon execution of the contract, and authorizing the mayor to execute said contract.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson, I mean Commissioner Abraham, you have the next one?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance officially naming a portion of the newly constructed five-lane roadway as New Hold Road, which has been completed as part of the Olivet Church Road Improvement Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the name of a portion of a newly constructed five-lane roadway originating at the intersection of Hinkerville Road and New Hold Road and proceeding through Kentucky Oats Mall to the intersection of the exiting reconstructed three-lane portion of Olivet Church Road be New Hold Road.
Second. All right.
Mayor Commission, good evening. Pretty self-explanatory, but basically from, don't want to give anybody free advertisement, but from Red Lobster back to the new intersection that Commissioner Abraham described where the three-lane ties in will be New Hold Road extended. That only affects three businesses as far as address changes, Pier One and Sears and maybe Hobby Lobby, because they face directly to the new road. Before, there was no road there, so the only road, the only address that could be given is Hinkerville Road, but now those businesses will be affected by an address. And we also prevent any address changes in the county by projecting this name on through. So, least impact to the businesses and residents as possible.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Ruth? Commissioner Gault, you have the next one?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute all documents necessary between the Delta Regional Authority and the City of Paducah for a Community Infrastructure Fund matching grant for the Flood Wall Pump Station Number Two Rehabilitation Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the mayor hereby authorized to execute all documents necessary with the Delta Regional Authority for a Community Infrastructure Fund matching grant award in the amount of $400,000 for the Flood Wall Pump Station Number Two Rehabilitation Project. The projected cost is estimated to be $5,000, or $5,105,000, which will be provided from the city's fiscal year 2017 budget and meet the 10% required grant match.
Second.
We originally applied for a million with the DRA. We got the 400,000. I believe Cheryl, this is the first round of this, if you want to talk about that too a little bit, but we're very pleased with the award that we do have.
If you recall, when I presented this for the application process, this was a new program created under the Delta Regional Authority for particularly infrastructure projects as it relates to flood wall or flood management and transportation projects. So we, I think we're very fortunate to get a little piece of the pie. So, even though we asked for a million, we got 400,000, we're very happy with it.
And as I stated with News Channel 6 the other day during the interview, we'll continue to be aggressive with what we do go after with other grants as well, so. But we're just trying to minimize our costs and also qualify our reimbursement with the Corps in the future. We're trying to protect that as well.
Thank you.
I'd just like to comment briefly that I think this award, because it is very, very competitive, is a credit to the Commission for its support of putting this project together, which is somewhat reactive, having to do with the changes at the federal level that causes us to sort of regroup and is certainly reflective of the longstanding and quality relationship between the City and the Corps, as well as the resourcefulness of Rick and people in his office in figuring out how to launch a first-phase project before the federal appropriations actually happen. A grant application is only as good as the project, but yet it takes a lot of skill and insights to be successful in a highly competitive environment like this. So certainly Cheryl Chino's efforts and her capabilities impacted the success of this as well. So I think this is a real shining moment for the organization to get an award like this in an extremely competitive environment. And as was mentioned by Rick, it's the first time we've cracked the Delta Regional Authority and we hope to go back there frequently in the future.
And, you know, I'd like to also say that this grant had the full support of Senator Paul and Senator McConnell and Congressman Whitfield, so doesn't hurt to have those heavy hitters in your corner either. So we're proud. Okay, Commissioner Rhodes? Do you have the long one?
Yes, ma'am. Not as long as news.
No, I have the long one.
You have the short straw, long read. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky Final Annual Budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the City of Paducah hereby adopts the final budget for fiscal year 2016 that reflects all adjustments made throughout the fiscal year and any adjustments required by the independent and financial auditors. Appropriations of the city government for a total of $74,510,750 and is summarized by a fund as follows. The General Fund, $34,237,445. The Transportation Fund, also known as MAP, $1,338,670. Investment Fund of $5,208,985. CBG Block Grant, $737,500. E911, $1,464,120. Court Awards, $30,375. Debt, $3,081,865. CIP, which is your Capital Improvement Projects, $13,872,675. Bond Fund, $1,274,360. Solid Waste, $4,691,660. Civic Center, $142,560. Rental, $159,705. Radio Depreciation, $166,815. Fleet, $511,715. Fleet Trust, $1,009,955. Self Insurance, $1,194,345. Health Insurance, $3,938,110. And the old police and fire pension, also known as the AEPF/PFF/Trust, $1,449,890 for a grand total of, again, $74,510,750. My one question is, John, after I've read all this stuff reasonably successfully, did we have any money left over?
Of course we did.
Great. Would you tell us about it?
After the meeting.
I need a second, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, John.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. The proposed ordinance before you reflects all adjustments throughout the fiscal year 16 and adjustments required by our independent financial auditors. The ordinance represents year-end housekeeping and cleanup following the close of the fiscal year, which ended June 2016, or we commonly refer to it as Fiscal 16. I'm here glad to answer any kind of questions you might have regarding the ordinance.
So, did people bring back Saks' money to the Finance Department?
It's already in the bank.
Very good. And so you end up with a little extra?
We always make sure we have money left over.
Very comfortable. Very comfortable.
It's called good stewardship. I do believe that's, isn't that what it's?
That's what hell works, John, to 25 years.
You want to hang on to that pin after you read that.
Thank you, Johnny, do a great job.
Thank you. I have a lot of help.
And your whole staff?
Yes. I have a lot of help.
And, you know, I mean, it's a total package that puts this budget together and makes it work with the directors, the city manager, everyone involved. And, you know, everyone's always willing to pitch in and do what they have to. And a lot of times we have to make cuts that are not easy to make, but we've managed to do it, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Good teamwork.
Yep, good team.
You know, I think about the times since I've been on the council, and you go through those times where the department heads, they get the message, this is it, this is it, you got to work. And the guys would get together and put their heads together and figure out how to make it work with limited funds. And they do that. And that's a skill set, you know? It's a lot of discipline in doing that. I really want to, got that, got to go. So, again, I applaud you all, the whole staff and employees for doing that. That shows great stewardship, I think.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson, you have the next one?
So, Salanne, because I do have the long one. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky authorizing and approving a general obligation lease with Community Financial Services Bank in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3 million to provide financing for the cost of the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of improvements to the Julia and Carol Convention Center, including related and pertinent costs, providing for the payment and security of the lease.
including related and pertinent costs, providing for the payment and security of the lease, creating a sinking fund, authorizing the execution of various documents related to such lease, making certain designations regarding such lease, and authorizing and approving an interlocal cooperation agreement with the County of McCracken County, Kentucky, to provide additional sources of payment for the principal of and interest on such lease. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah, Kentucky to execute and deliver a general obligation lease agreement in the maximum aggregate principal amount of 3 million with Community Financial Services Bank in order to finance improvements to the Julian Carroll Convention Center and an interlocal cooperation agreement with the County of McCracken County, Kentucky, whereby the county will remit to the city a portion of certain taxes collected by the county under Sections 91A .390 and 91A .392 of the Kentucky Revised Statutes as amended in order to provide funds to the city to pay or reimburse the city for the payment of debt service on the financing lease. The ordinance approves the forms of the financing lease and the interlocal agreement presented to the City Commission of the City and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the financing lease and the interlocal agreement with such changes therein as shall not be adverse to the city and as may be approved by the mayor and city clerk. The ordinance further provides for a general obligation pledge to assess sufficient taxes to comply with the obligations to pay lease payments under the financing lease. The full text of the section relating to the pledge to levy and assess a tax to pay the financing leases as follows. Section 2, General Obligation Pledge. Pursuant to the Constitution of the Commonwealth and Chapter 66 of the Kentucky Revised Statutes as amended, the obligation of the city created by the financing lease shall be a full general obligation of the city and for the prompt payment of the lease payments, the full faith, credit, and revenue of the city are hereby pledged. During the period the financing lease is outstanding, there shall be and thereby, there hereby is levied on all the taxable property in the city in addition to all other taxes without limitation as to rate a direct tax annually at an amount sufficient to pay the financing lease payments on the financing lease when and as due is being hereby found and determined that current tax rates are within all applicable limitations. Said tax shall be and is hereby ordered computed, certified, levied, and extended upon the tax duplicate and collected by the same officers in the same manner and at the same time that taxes for general purposes of each of said years are certified, extended, and collected. Said tax shall be placed before and in preference to all other items and for the full amount thereof, provided however that in each year to the extent that the other taxes or revenues of the city are available for the payment of the lease payments and are appropriated for such purpose. The amount of such direct tax upon the taxable property in the city shall be reduced by the amount of such taxes or revenues so available and appropriated.
Second.
I think we said all that to say we were borrowing money for the dome relocation and capital needs for the convention center.
Yeah, I think I can summarize it pretty quickly here. Basically, you have before you an ordinance which authorizes us to borrow, the city to borrow $3 million and to initiate an interlocal agreement with our friends over at the Fiscal County Court. The loan proceeds will be used to repay the city for the cost incurred to relocate the dome, with the balance of the proceeds to be used to fund the convention center's capital improvement needs. A portion of the county's transit room tax or the bed tax will be used to fund debt service on the loan over the next 15 years. We solicit all local banks and CFSB offer the best financing package. We think the local borrowing was about 1% less than the traditional bond cost that we normally would have done. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have at this time. And I also have with me Mark Rollins with Hilliard Lyons. He's our financial advisor. And I'm sure after your questions, he'll have a few words that he wants to say too.
For clarification, John, when you say 1% less, that's actually the equivalent of about a third less overall because it's 1% less on what otherwise would have been a 3% borrowing rate, which is now 2. So, it's very significant.
That's exactly right. And Mark, he's going to, he'll put some numbers to that real quick and recent bond issues too, for you.
So, you know, some people may say, why is this, why are we doing this instead of the county?
John, you can answer that.
Well...
Just to make that clear.
Why are we doing, I guess it's, we're good at doing this kind of thing, I suppose.
It was our turn.
It's our turn. The good, the really good news is that the county nor the city are really going to have to pay for it. It's really being paid for people that are staying at hotels. And we're able to use that money to improve things for the local folks to, you know, increase economic development, do all kinds of neat things. So, we're using other people's money to do some stuff that we really need to have done.
And none of this is coming out of any taxes that people in the city or county pay?
No. Unless local people are staying at a hotel, no.
It's the hotel tax, yes.
That's correct.
And it was our turn, yeah.
Correct.
Well, and the other thing is the convention center does not have the authority to incur debt. So, in those instances where it's been necessary over the years, the debt issuance has been by the city or the county. And Commissioner Wilson is correct. It's our turn in rotation this time, so.
Have any questions for Mark? Anyone?
If there aren't any questions, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, I just wanted to echo what John mentioned. Since the election, really, interest rates in the bond markets have basically skyrocketed. They've gone, just in two or three weeks, they've gone up about a whole percent. So, whereas a month ago, you could have borrowed, you know, say 2%, now they're 3%. And that's a big deal. So, we solicited, as John said, all of the local banks for this loan. The CFSB came back with a 1.98% rate on their loan. All of the other banks were over 3%. And bonds would also yield over 3% right now. Just as a comparison, we actually sold bonds today for the University of Louisville, who has a similar actual credit rating to the city. And they did actually three issues. On a 20-year deal, they got a 3.78. On a 12-year deal, they got a 2.67. And on a taxable five-year deal, they got a 2.37, all of which is higher than the rate that you're going to pay on this 15-year note to CFSB. It's a pretty screaming deal.
It is.
And, you know, normally, I would just advise, John, you know, let's just do bonds. It's typically the most competitive. That's going to get you your lowest rate. But given how unusual the markets have been since the election, you know, we thought it would be prudent to look at some of these bank loans. So, that's why we went that route this time and instead of bonds. And also, give a little credit to Judge Leeper. The city or the county also recently did a fairly successful bank loan, and he encouraged us to check it out as well. So, that was prudent advice.
And I know it's 1.4 million for the dome relocation, and the other is for the capital needs as the convention center or Corporation Board determines.
That's correct.
And the anticipated closing date for the loan is January 24th.
Thank you.
I might mention one other thing. This story has a lot to it, but in terms of the earlier kind of comments a little bit in jest about John having a little more cash laying around, I think it's because of the prudent financial management and our ability to maintain some unobligated reserves. And in fact, the city has been the banker for the Pavilion Relocation Project for the past year, year and a quarter, which is a strong exercise, I think, in partnership and in support of the convention center and in cooperation with the county and all of that. So, certainly, I mean, it could have been a different situation where we wouldn't have had the ability to do that. So, we have been, and with this process now will come the reimbursement to the city, and John's coffers will be replenished.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 2-591B and modifying its content by specifying what public officials have the authority of citation officer under the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Section 591 of Chapter 2 of the Paducah Code of Ordinances to add and delete what public officials are citation officers under the Code of the City of Paducah.
Second.
Hi, Greg.
Good evening, everyone. What this is, is part of the new House Bill that is specifying which personnel actually have the authority to do the code enforcement throughout the city. It's, nothing's really changing. There were some old titles that were still in the ordinance. We're just a little cleaning that up and specifying. So, you will see any changes in the date of operations. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gault, you're next. You're it.
Okay. Here we go, another two pager. I've got it right here. I'm good. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance completely repealing Chapter 42, Section 1 through 100, the Nuisance Code and related ordinances, and replacing them in their entirety with the Code Enforcement Board and related ordinances, thus revising Chapter 42 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah is revising Chapter 42 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah and repealing specific already enacted ordinances in order to create a Code Enforcement Board for the purpose of regulating and enforcing nuisance, property maintenance, and other code ordinances that are to be adopted herein and for allowing the imposition of remedial measured fees and/or fines, which will be published as follows in accordance with the Kentucky Revised Statutes. Ordinance fines schedule. Violations of ordinances that are enforced by the Code Enforcement Board shall be subject to the following schedule of civil fines. If a, if a citation for a violation of the Nuisance Code is not contested by the person charged with the violation, the penalty set forth in the subsection may apply per inspection. If the code enforcement officer is required to make inspection beyond the initial inspection and one additional follow-up inspection to determine if the required corrections have been made, then the Code Enforcement Board shall assess the following fines not to exceed the value of the property as determined by the Property Valuation Administrator. Inspections, abandoned vehicles and appliances, grass weeds, litter, solid waste, other nuisance defined by 42-50A 1 through 7. The third inspection and all subsequent inspections, $100. B, if the citation is contested and a hearing before the Code Enforcement Board is required, the following maximum penalties may be imposed at the discretion of the board per inspection not to exceed the value of property as recorded by the Property Valuation Administrator. Inspections, property maintenance, third inspection, $250, fourth inspection, $350, fifth inspection and all subsequent inspections, $500. Lean fines, charges, abatement costs, fees, penalties, attorney's fees, and costs. The city shall possess a lien on the property owned by the person found by a non-appellable final order or by a final judgment of the court to have committed a violation of the code for all fines assessed for the violation and for all charges, costs, penalties, abatement costs, and fees, including without limitation attorney's fees and a $30 administration fee incurred by the city in connection with the enforcement of the code. The lien shall bear interest at the rate of 4% per annum until paid. An affidavit of the code enforcement officer shall constitute prima facie evidence of the amount of the lien and the regularity of the proceedings pursuant to KRS 65.8801 to KRS 65.8839. A notice of the lien may be recorded in the office of the county clerk. The lien shall be noticed to all persons from time to time of its recording and shall bear interest until paid. The lien shall continue for 10 years following the date of the non-appellable final order or final court judgment. Subject to Section 42 through 45I, the lien shall take precedent over all other liens except state, county, school board, and city taxes, and may be enforced by judicial proceedings including a foreclosure action. In addition to the remedy prescribed in Subsection A, the person found to have committed the violation shall be personally liable for the amount of all fines assessed for the violation and for all charges, costs, penalties, abatement costs, and fees, including without limitation attorney's fees and a $30 administration fee incurred by the city in connection with the enforcement of the code. The aforementioned amount shall bear interest at the rate of 4% per annum until paid. The city may bring a civil action against the responsible owner or owners and shall have the same remedies as provided for the recovery of a debt. The city shall be entitled to recover from the responsible owner or owners all attorney's fees and other costs incurred by the city by reason of the collection upon and enforcement of the responsible owner's liability hereunder, and the lien which secures the same. Upon payment, determination of the Code Enforcement Board or court order, the city shall be authorized to release any lien filed hereunder and recorded in the office of the city clerk.
Second.
Any questions?
That's clear.
Basically, what we're doing is in order to conform with the new House Bill 422 that the state has passed, we're taking out one ordinance and coming back in with an updated ordinance once again. It's just like the other one. Really, anything that we're doing is not going to change. Everything will probably stay the same.
Will it make it any easier to enforce some of this? No?
No, it'll be about the same process as what we're dealing with now.
All right.
There's a comment about a person would be personally liable for the fines and this, that, and the other. So, I was thinking about when we were hashing around with 405 Broadway, and the building came down, and we couldn't touch the person because he was in an LLC, a limited liability corporation. My guess is that my picking up of personal liability does not connect to that.
I think I understand what you're asking, and it does probably have to be an opinion of an attorney. But it's the owner of record of the property. So, if it is an LLC, it's still going to be the same way with what we've been dealing with in the past with some of these.
Well, it would, you know, it would have been, I was sort of hopeful that maybe the state would have made it where you cannot hide behind an LLC to...
Yeah, that is something that's a problem statewide, but I don't think as of yet they have figured out a great solution to do that. I understand what you're saying, but right now, there's no laws or anything where we can proceed there very easily anyway.
We'll keep after it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
City Managers' Report.
I'd like Cheryl Chino to come forward and make an announcement and a couple of other things after that.
On December 15th, the Planning Department is hosting a public meeting regarding the Broadway and Jefferson Conversion Project at 25 and 7 p.m. at the Convention Center in the lobby. We will have graphics and maps available for the public to view to get more information about the project. The engineering study that you guys commissioned is in its infancy. So, not, a lot of decisions have been made about the routing of the bike lanes and so forth. But we want to give the public an opportunity to view the information that is available, ask questions, and provide us with feedback. So, we encourage the public to come out and give us some information. Anybody have any questions? Will that be the only one? At this time, it's the only one we have planned. I'm not sure what our plans are for the future. I imagine we'll have additional public meetings when more engineering data is available and we have more concrete information from them. There is the possibility that we will host a second meeting. So, it's really just come and go? It is. Between 5 and 7. Three things at night. There's so much going on during this time of the year.
It's not going to be so much presentation as it is an opportunity for exchange and one-to-one question and answers and input stuff.
Right. There'll be folks from HDR Engineering as well as planning staff. It's come in, mingle around, ask questions, view the information. It's not going to be a formal presentation of any type. It's just an opportunity for them to view the information and ask questions. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I might mention as well, the Planning Department has provided to the Urban Renewal Agency a packet of information on five prospective neighborhoods that are being looked at. You recall that process for potential revitalization efforts going forward. There are about 15 factors that were used to examine the neighborhoods by. So, that's a lot of data with maps and hard data that's being provided to that agency to assess those several neighborhoods for potential selection as the, or one of the neighborhoods to focus on going forward. So, that process is ongoing. And again, a good piece of work on part of the Planning Commission to prepare that much information for the Urban Renewal Agency to use as they contemplate that and come forward with a recommendation to you ultimately.
The, hang on one second. The meeting we had here, well, we had several folks from the community when we were talking about the possibility of changing the roadway. Folks had a lot of questions. We didn't have a whole lot of information other than just, because some of the information wasn't back yet. So, this meeting that you're talking about, some of that data is back. And so, anyone coming to that meeting that will, you know, possibly look at... coming to that meeting that will, you know, possibly look at that data, they may have additional questions based on the information that they've received. Just wanna make sure that folks understand that it's still in the process.
It is. Yes. There is only a limited amount of information back. We're looking at the, the alternatives that we're considering as far as routing and things of that nature for the bike lanes to connect back to Noble Park and the Greenway Trail. And just get general feedback. We'll talk about parking. We'll talk about loading and unloading zones. There was a lot of concerns about that come through our office. So, well, this is an opportunity for everyone to get enough information about some of those situations and how we hope to address some of that through the engineering process.
And thank you, Cheryl. I'd also like Michelle Small, Assistant City Manager, to provide the Commission with a update on the software upgrade project, kind of focusing on some of the framework for the, for the project going forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So, I have gone ahead and put it up on a PowerPoint so those at home can see what we're talking about. So, I'm here to give you a brief update on the Enterprise Resource Planning Project, better known as the ERP project that was kicked off in July. It's been a very busy few months, and we have a wonderful cross-departmental team working through the implementation of this project. One of the first things we did was we developed a communications plan, and that's really important because this is a pretty massive undertaking that will impact all departments in some way. And we wanted to come up with a plan that would keep them engaged and informed throughout the whole process. So, I have a few items to review with you tonight, as well as give you a very brief update on where we are. So, first of all, you'll notice on the top of all of these handouts, we've kind of rebranded it to be called the Munis Project. ERP was pretty broad and vague, and Munis is what Tyler Technology, who our vendor is, what they call the software. So, therefore, we've now called it the Munis Project. And we have a few handouts, and these are meant to be quick reference guides to look at our vision, goals, as well as the phased rollout. And we'll walk through those in a little bit of detail in a minute. And finally, we have a newsletter that will be rolled out quarterly or as needed when we have major milestones, that will update the organization on exactly what we're doing and what they can expect. So, first of all, we have our vision and goals here. This is really what's driving the project, and I wanted to spend a little bit of time on the bolded words. And so, what you can see is that the vision is really to have this integrated software solution where multiple pieces talking to really enhance our customer services and improve our business processes. Also, we will be taking a deep dive into what we do, how we do it, what new functionality the software can bring, to really take advantage of the best practices. So, we'll implement this vision by working towards all of these goals that are listed on kind of the outside and the bottom of the handout. And I know you've seen this all before. This was, been a part of the contract development when we selected the vendor. So, this is our phased rollout, and what you see here are the six phases with their go-live date. So, right now, we're in the middle of the first phase, which is really the expenditure side with our financials, budgeting and accounting, purchasing, as well as fixed assets. And really, this is the backbone of the system. So, right now, we're developing the structure that will really impact the future phases. So, we're excited with each of these phases as they get going to see what new functionalities they'll bring and ways that we can really enhance what we're doing and improve what we're doing. And finally, this is a newsletter, so this will be updated periodically. And just to walk through the structure, up top is the vision, which we've already walked through a little bit. Next, we have just some very brief, kind of frequently asked questions that has a highlight on the timeline, the current phase we're in, and who the organization can contact with questions. So, on the final piece of this handout, we have recent activities and next steps. And what you'll see here is, like I mentioned, we're in the first phase, and we're really in the most challenging part where we're evaluating what we do and what new functionality the software can bring and how we want to do business. And then, in January, we're finishing that up now, and January, we'll bring forward policy recommendations and how we want to configure the software and start testing in the spring. Also, finance and IT are working very hard to convert data from our current system into our new system. So, they've had to extract it and get it, you know, up and running in the new system so that we have vendor data, we have prior year's actuals and budgets when we go live in July. So, another thing that's coming up, one of the really important pieces of this implementation is developing a citywide training plan. And part of that is we're working on creating a computer training room in the basement of City Hall. And so, this will be dedicated training space where we can pull the end users away from the front line so we can have focused and dedicated training. And this is important because if they learn how to use the software and become proficient in it, this will really empower them to do their business better, analyze data more. So, it's a really great opportunity for them to learn the software and for us to implement in full capability. Also, this is really a living system. There will be upgrades and new things that will be rolled out, so we'll continue to use it into the future to train people on what's happening and how we can even further improve their businesses. And it can also be used for any city department that wants to do training. So, it'll really benefit the whole organization as well as this project. And so, all of these materials are part of our communications plan, and they're available on the Intranet to, like I said, to keep everyone updated and let them know what's going on. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, or if the city manager has anything to add to our project.
I think you covered it well. By the way, Michelle is, is doing a bang-up job with this by all accounts, and we're very fortunate to have attracted someone to the organization who had had some experience doing an organizational-wide process like this. It's literally hit the ground running. In fact, I think we've even got ahead of the consultant on occasion or two, so we've been asked by the vendor to hold on, but slow down, this will be getting ahead of us.
Great. Yeah, we're ahead of our deadlines, and they've been really impressed with the work, especially finance has put forward. We've really impressed them with some of the things that we've done, so.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, any Commissioner comments tonight?
Just one. Just wanna say that it's been about ten or twelve years since my Kentucky Wildcats played in Florida in a bowl game. We got that done. And so, December thirty, no, December twenty-ninth, at ten o'clock AM, we're in Jacksonville in the Tax Slayer Bowl playing Georgia Tech, so.
Weed. Are you part of that weed?
Always.
Physically? I know mentally and emotionally you'll be there. You make the, the driving trip? Couldn't be very far.
No, no. I'll hit the pause button, man.
Nice.
I'll be at the house.
Any public comments tonight? We do have an executive session.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Rose?
I move the Board go into a closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topic. Number two, proposed or pending litigation as permitted by KRS sixty-one dot eight-ten-one-C.
Second. Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Galt?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. So, we will not be coming back. Meeting is adjourned.